The October 13th, 2015 meeting of the North Kingstown School Committee is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, on one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Healy, can you please call the roll? Mrs. Evans Otto?
Here.
Mr. Blasbuck?
Here.
Mrs. Clarkin?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. McGovern?
Here.
Mrs. Hell?
Here.
Student representative?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Healy, can you please recite the calendar? On Tuesday, October 27th, there will be a school committee business meeting at 7:00 PM held at Davisville Academy at 50 East Court. And Friday, November 6th, is a professional development day, and there is no school for students that day. Dr. Humbert, do you have a Kneecap Science Scores presentation?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give you an overview of the results that we have at this point. So this is a little bit of a recap. You've had this information before. The numbers have just changed. Our test results are based on last spring, which was May of 2015. And the Kneecap test was administered for grades four, eight, and eleven. We had over 30,000 Rhode Island public school students taking it, and for NK, 924. So this is assessing the content and skills of grade spans. The grade spans are from K to four, five to eight, and nine to eleven. So it's unlike the previous reading tests, ELA and math tests, that we were having with Kneecap because they were annual assessments. And the POC testing is annual assessments as well. However, the science is annual, but it's only for those grades. And so we have multiple choice, constructed response, and inquiry task every year. And it is on earth and space science, excuse me, physical science and the life sciences. So overall, looking at the state results, we have seen very little change from last year to this year. There was significant gains going back to 2008 to 2015. And we have significant gains for NK as well, which we'll see in a minute. However, from last year to this year, there were no significant gains for those grades four, eight, and eleven. They were essentially the same from last year to this year. One thing that we can take some pride in is that North Kingstown as a district, public school district, is the fifth highest performing district based on our students achieving proficiency. And I want to note that proficiency is levels three and four on the Kneecap test. So it's one, two, three, and four. Proficiency is levels three and four. So here you see our trend in grade four from 2011 right through to 2015. A little disappointed that we went down from last year, but we do have to remember that it's important with these tests to look at the trend because it's a smaller number of students, there's a lot of variance with these tests, and the content is different. It's measured on grade span, as I said, so there's a lot of factors to consider. Also, this test is done in the springtime, and it's done with several of our other tests, so I think we might have had some test fatigue going on as well that may be playing into this. In grade eight, we did go up two percentage points. However, we had been higher than that, as you can see, from 2011, 12, and 13. And we did not rebound back to those earlier percentages. But this was similar for the whole state. And for grade 11, we went down a little bit, 3% in that one too. So for elementary and grade 11, we saw a little bit of a decline. We had some improvements, though, school gains from last year to this year. At two of our elementary schools, Fishing Cove showed an increase from 69% achievement in proficiency level to 77%. And I know Mrs. Saylor, the principal, is here tonight, so I'm sure she's very pleased with those results. And Hamilton also went from 69% to 78%. And I went through all the other schools' data points, and I only could find five other elementary schools in the state that performed better. So that's quite an achievement. This is actually a five-year trend. I left in the 2011, which gives you five years of data there, not a four-year trend. And this shows our improvement going year by year, but it also in the bottom part of the slide, you can see the difference from 2008 to 2015. So as a district, we are showing a positive 18.5% growth. At the elementary level, from 2018 to 2015, we're showing a 12.6% growth. And you can see the scores year by year there. And at the middle level, we are showing a 14.7% growth from 2008 to 2015. And at the high school, this is the most significant growth that we have seen, a difference of positive 26.5%. And I know we have two of our high school administrators here. Or Dr. Morse is here. I think Dr. Missiri was here. Well, she's checking out the sound. And so for our next steps, we're going to continue our school-level analysis. You know, we just got these results relatively recent, a couple of weeks ago, so we're needing to look at our subgroups a little more and do the item analysis that is released to us. Also, the GEMSNet districts, the GEMSNet provides a data analysis for us, for all of us that are in the consortium, which you see the contract is on the agenda tonight. And then we're going to continue to align our curriculum to the next-generation state standards. We are in transition right now, so the Kneecap test is actually not exactly measuring what we are now beginning to implement for a curriculum. So we need a test that's aligned, so I don't know what you're going to be seeing in the next couple of years regarding this. And of course, we'll continue to incorporate our reading and writing piece and math with our common core. So I do want to say that, once again, that we did have a lot of testing in the spring. Previous tests for Kneecap, for ELA and math occurred in the fall. And this one, we had the POC testing in the spring along with this test. We also had at the eighth grade, we had a technology assessment that occurred. We also had the NAEP testing that occurred. We also had our STAR testing that was occurring. So with all of that going on, this was one of the last tests, the Kneecap, and I really do think we need to consider some of that. And across the state, people are aware that this is happening. So we have asked that some of those tests be staggered to another grade level, but this happens in fourth grade and it happens in eighth grade, that amount of tests, particularly with the NAEP testing as well, and the national assessment of educational progress, the nation's report card. That happens every two years. Mr. Jones had asked for summaries of some of the disaggregated data, so in front of you, you'll see a breakdown of gender, SES, and IEP. And I did put a few notes on this papers here for you to see. As far as the gender is concerned, we see when they get to high school, there is an increase from the middle school. We had a gender gap of 3% at the middle level, and at the high school, we have a gender gap of 7%. So the females are outperforming the males by 7%. So I don't think that it's that significant, but it is a slight, that's significant, but it's a slight increase. And then for our SES, which refers to our poverty level, you'll see the economically disadvantaged in the first column, and that is the percentages there are the rates of proficiency. And so we had a gap of 25% at the elementary level, and Mr. Jones was pointing out to me that we increased to a 45% gap in the middle level and then went down to a 19% gap at the high school. So there's improvement once we get to the high school. However, we had low performance in our economically disadvantaged group at the middle level, at only 10% performance for proficiency. So that's disconcerting. And then for our IEP population, we always have gaps between students on IEPs and all others. However, it's surprising to see the gap in the elementary school being so high this year with 57%. Encouraging to see that we close that gap getting to the middle level and the high school level. And then below that, you see the different domains. We have four domains that are tested. You can see that, the physical, earth, life, well, the three domains, and then the inquiry task. And so for the elementary level, we have been, over the last three years, in the inquiry, we have been low in the performance. It's characteristic of some of the other schools that I looked at. And then for the high school, well, the middle school has actually been pretty stable and high for the inquiry task. And then at the high school, we had a boost last year, but the year before, we were 46% as you can see, and in 2015, at 42%. So I think we have uneven performance in the inquiry tasks at the high school. That task is more database, it's data analysis as opposed to a lab experiment. And then on the opposite page is a breakdown of all the schools going back to 2010, where you're seeing no score back that far. That was when we had no fourth grade in those particular schools with the configuration we had at that time. So that gives you the trends going all the way back, so you can see the actual performance. Overall, it's pretty stable and positive. And then below that, Mr. Jones had asked about levels moving from one to two, and I was also interested to see if we were showing any gains. I had, previous to his asking, looked at our movement from three to four, and we did not have much movement at all from level three to level four. So that's disappointing. I'd like to see that happening. It was somewhat rare, as you can see from the data there, although at the high school, we have had movement to the, to level four. We also did not have much movement between levels one and two, but we had movement between levels two and three, for the positive and the negative. Any questions?
Thank you. I just have a couple. So thank you, Dr. Humbert, for doing this. And this sort of disaggregation, I think, is really important, you know, to start pulling out some of these things, because I was just going to ask two questions. One is, I know last year, they mentioned at the middle school, there was an issue with a question or something, and we had this whole thing of it didn't apply at the state or, you know, it was very confusing. So was that issue solved? Because, I mean, that was one of the explanations for the drop, sort of, across a lot of districts at middle school at eighth grade, but it seemed like we sort of flatlined as a state too at eighth grade. So, you know, was that issue solved and it's just carryover?
There's been no discussion. You know, last year, we had a lot of discussion at this point with the state, and this time, they are waiting, I think, to have much discussion about this, I believe, until the POC rollout. So they did not do a separate discussion. Sometimes we have a workshop where they'll go over the results, and we have not had that opportunity yet.
And then, yeah, so thank you. And then, you know, you highlighted the two I was just going to point out, which is why, I mean, we've made a little movement from one to two, which is great, but, you know, is there sort of a reason with math and reading, we tend to have, you know, at least a bigger chunk in that level four?
Right.
You know, is it just something about, I mean, breaking through to be whatever, is it proficient with distinction? Is that?
It is.
Yeah.
Level four is.
That level of getting, you know, more level fours?
Or? You know, I honestly believe it's, in my opinion, I believe it's the grade span means of testing. It's very, it's very difficult to have content over that wide of a span and expect students to demonstrate movement. It just, it just seems to me that that's one of the reasons for it. It's easier to see the annual, and also it's easier to see with larger numbers, too. We're talking small cohorts of people. That's why I included the ends on the disaggregated one, because when you look at the numbers, I mean, they're very, very, very small population. You know, even for the, for the entire elementary school and the entire middle school, when you look at it, you're only talking, you know, females for the elementary, 136, and middle school, 158, and the high school, 169. Those are really very low numbers, so.
The other thing we start digging in is just, you know, maybe a little more like physical and earth, especially because that's taught like in ninth grade, and then there's a two-year gap. So, but is inquiry sort of a skill that's, I mean, not as much science-based? I mean, I know it's science-based in that sense, but I mean, it's sort of taught as we go along?
It's taught.
That's the sort of question of why it's a thing, and then it peaks in middle school and then drops off again.
Well, it is, it is taught, but there's a difference, there is a difference in eighth grade testing and eleventh grade testing. As I mentioned, in eighth grade, every other year, it's an actual lab experiment, and the students work together.
Oh, right.
To analyze it. At the eleventh grade, they work individually.
Okay.
And, you know, there are only eight questions for the inquiry task. So when you look at that.
Right. Yeah, getting one wrong is, so, so great. I'd just like to point out, too, you know, for the committee, you know, we look at certain things, but, you know, although our middle school maybe has dropped a little, it's still twice as much as the charter school that we send students to for science. And our elementary school scores from our schools we would, those kids would go to are higher than the elementary school at the charter school that those kids go to. And our high school scores are higher than the high school charter school that we send kids to. So I would hope the state would disaggregate the charter school data by sending LEAs, because I think there's a lot of interesting things to be learned as well. That's, so anyways, maybe when you go to your superintendent's thing, you can make that point. So thanks a lot, Dr.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Humbert. We don't have anyone signed up for citizens' comments. Is there anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up? Dr. Ojai, can we have your superintendent's report?
Sure. I'd like to just start by commending, you know, the teachers in our district and administrators and all of the educators in our district for the hard work that they have done to get to these science scores. You know, it's really heartwarming to know that our district stands so well. The numbers, you know, you see numbers in 40s and 50s and 60s, and it's hard to gauge exactly what that means, but it's good to know that in relation to the rest of the state, we're doing so well, and we have been for quite some time. And one of the items on the agenda tonight is about the GEMSNet program, and that is certainly something that is serving us well in North Kingstown. My superintendent's report's very brief tonight. I just want to make a pitch again. If anyone is interested in seeing the Davisville Academy and learning more about the clinical day program, our next school committee meeting on October 27th will be held at the Davisville Academy. It will, the open session will begin at 7:00 PM that evening, and we will take a break right after the presentation from Principal Karen Siri and Dr. Patty Bezullo, the head of Special Ed in the district. And they will talk about the program, and then there will be some time to have a tour of the building as well. So that's on October 27th, two weeks from tonight. Thank you.
I can disclose that there were no executive session votes taken this evening. Can I have a motion to steal the executive session minutes of October 13, 2015?
To whom?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any exemptions to the consent agenda? Mr. Blasbuck?
C1 and 2, E7, and F.
Mrs. McGovern?
E11.
Are there any other exemptions? Can I have a motion to approve all other items on the consent agenda except C1 and 2, E7, E11, and F? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Blasbuck? C1 and 2?
I, Mr. Jones and I were not present for those meetings, so we would just like to abstain if we could have a rule call vote, please.
Mrs. Healy, can you call the rule call? So this would be, excuse me, motion to approve the executive session minutes of September 22nd, 2015. Mrs. Evans Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Blasbuck?
Abstain, please.
Mrs. Clarkin?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Abstain.
Mrs. McGovern?
Yes.
Thank you. And then a vote on the business meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2015. Mrs. Evans Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Blasbuck?
Abstain, please.
Mrs. Clarkin?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Abstain.
Mrs. McGovern?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Blasbuck? E7?
I'm going to make a motion to table E7.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. McGovern? E11?
I just had a question on, why there's such a disparity between Rickford Middle School and David, Davisville.
Number of the Davisville tutors are taking care of the after-school homework club, which is a Title I program. It's essentially similar service, but it's paid for in a different line, and you approved it last time, I believe.
Just one quick, Clark. Would that be, Phil, because grant funds take care of some of that?
Yeah, that's a grant-funded item. Yeah. But essentially, the same services exist at both schools.
To comment, Dr. Ojai, I think the committee's asked if we can, not for this meeting, obviously, but sort of get kind of dashboard statistics at the end of the year in terms of ARC use and that kind of stuff. So, you know, we see like after-school activity, participation rates, and that kind of stuff.
Right. It's been our intention to get that to you. I'll have it for you next time.
Okay.
Apologize for not having it tonight.
Mr. Blasbuck? Item E?
We need to approve that one.
Motion to approve?
E11.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Blasbuck? E?
Yeah, so I just wanted to personally speak on this one. This is the joint resolution to turn 100 Fairway Drive, which is the former administration building, over to the town. So I can explain my position on this. I think that as it's no longer being used as a school building, we have an obligation to turn it over to the town at their request, and I'll be voting for it. Personally, I don't think it's the best option, not that there are a lot of options, I just don't think it's a wise investment on the town's part, and I'm willing to say that, and I've mentioned that to various town councils that I've spoken to. So it's my sincere hope that that is done very carefully with putting as little money into that building as possible, because every dollar that is spent on rehabbing that building is money that could be put in rehabilitating the town hall or its replacement, whatever the choice may be for that. And so I think the folks that are in charge of that need to be very careful on how that's done. And I also have concerns, because while there are no concrete plans for that location, a number of very long-term plans on the school side have looked at using that particular area as a place to put additional structures, whether it be a new middle school, new elementary school, or any type of school. So, you know, it's a concern of mine if that turns out to be a more long-term rather than short-term use of the building. That's what I have to say.
Mrs. Evans Otto? Mrs. McGovern?
Okay. I just wanted to make a recommendation that on the second paragraph, it states that bringing the town hall facilities to the site of the present North Kingstown School District Central Office Administrative Building-
Because then it would read "The council is desiring to move the town hall facilities to the site of the former North Kingstown School District Central Administration Building located at 100 Fairway Drive."
Sure, that works.
Mrs. Evans-otto? Yes, good catch, Mrs. McGovern. And I would echo Mr. Blasbog's comments regarding the building. And many a school committee prior to this one has said that they didn't want to put any money into that building for good reason. I mean, we talked about a lot of different things with that building, but we knew that the long-term sustainability of the building was not something that we could really count on, so we were pretty determined not to put a lot of money, other than, of course, you know, safety and minimal, things like that. But Mary, just if you know, just from your dealings with, you know, speaking to Phil Bergeron and the town, do you know the amount of money that's being spent on the building or that's planned to be spent on the building or?
No, I do not. I know that Mr. Bergeron is working on getting estimates for the town council, but I do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to know.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to follow up to clarify that point. I think it's wise, in paragraph four, we have that the committee has the right for first refusal once the town decides that it's no longer going to use that property for any municipal purposes. And I think a 10-year depreciation rate is a fair, is a fair timeline. I just think because obviously, the depreciation rate based on this municipality's useful improvements, and I don't think there needs to be wording in here, but just that we have an understanding between, you know, the town council and the school committee, that, you know, that at some point, we will agree on what that figure for useful improvements is. And I think that would answer your question, Lynn, then. And I know that, you know, the administrators between both the town and municipal side can work that out. I just think it's important to put a mark on the wall sometime in the future that we get that agreed-upon figure, so we understand what the depreciation rate baseline is.
And I did have a brief communication with Mr. Bergeron. We're thinking that the best timeframe in which to start that clock, if you will, would be upon the town hall occupying those premises. And when it comes to, you know, working on what that baseline number is that we're depreciating, Mr. Bergeron and I will work together on that. It's just a matter of, you know, getting the invoices together and all the charges together, so that that can be in a nice little package in the event that neither Mr. Bergeron nor I are here in the future if the building is to be taken back by the school committee.
Yep. Thank you, Mrs. King.
Any further discussion? Can I have a motion to approve item F? So, move. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mrs. King, discussion of the Town Government Center Committee?
Yes. Mr. Bergeron asked me to discuss this with the committee tonight. We really don't need to have any decisions tonight, but it's definitely something I would like you all to think about and get back to me. The town council has twice voted to move forward with a committee to review shared space between the operations of the town hall and the school department. The composition of the committee has been discussed but not completely finalized. And what's been discussed is that there could possibly be six members that would represent the school and six members that would represent the town council, which would be three staff and possibly three other outside representatives. I personally believe that 12 members of a committee are way too many members to get any work done. That's my personal opinion. I would like to see possibly that committee be brought something from the staff, being the staff being Dr. Ojai and I, the staff being Phil Bergeron and his assistants, possibly looking at what we need together jointly. It's going to be a little bit easier for us on the school side to put that together, because we just did it with our move, you know, last year to 100 Romano Vineyard Way. But I think that as a committee trying to formulate that is going to be difficult if we have 12 people on it, but that's not, that's just my input. So, I would like you, if you could please, think about, you know, the input, maybe even possibly whom you would like to have as representatives on that committee. I believe that we should have somebody from our facilities subcommittee on that with us. There's kind of a lot of ways that we can go, but I know the town council is looking to move forward on getting that committee started, so that we can talk about sharing space, administrative space between the two entities.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Can I have, oh, Mrs. Evans-otto?
Just one quick point on that. I'm sure, I appreciate this attempt to put the committee together and having half school and half town participants. I think that's a great idea. I agree about the facilities subcommittee being involved. Hopefully, we'll also have, I don't know, a separate committee or some way of having citizen involvement as well in terms of just input and suggestions, you know, maybe to this committee, I don't know. But just keep us updated on what the expectation is when we pick the names. Mrs. King, thank you.
Yeah, and I would appreciate any other comments that you all have like that, so that I can, you know, communicate that back to Mr. Bergeron, and he can bring that to the town council. I think that there, depending upon what happens and what moves forward, especially if there's a discussion of a bond or a discussion of a purchase of property, you're going to get a lot of town input on that, because that has to be town-voted, so.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? So, move. Oh, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sure. All right. I have a target. Aye. All right. Sure. All right. I have a target. Aye. 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 All right.[1630.12]